In order, if you'll stand, we'll recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll recognize a short moment of silence, please. Amen. Got Ms. Angela serving as the clerk tonight, so Ms. Angela, do a roll call, please.
Harrison.
Here.
Tatum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Fishman. Tatum.
Here.
Rowland.
Here.
We have a call on.
All right. Had a few minutes to look over tonight's agenda, and take a motion to approve.
I motion we approve the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Tatum, to approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I think they actually had something on the agenda. I apologize.
He would, it's right there.
Okay. I am wanting to put something on, on new business.
That would've been heading into your agenda.
Yeah, that would've been earlier.
Make a motion, do it, and we'll see what happens. Make a motion, what you want to put on the new business.
I make a motion on both and just on to the animal control committee committee at the first of the year.
Second, add motion. It's new business.
Second.
I already seconded it.
Yeah. Motion by Ms. Tatum and seconded by Mr. Martin to add new business number three, which will be to add a member to the animal control committee.
I don't think they're adding a member, they're putting a replacement.
Okay, replacing a member at first of the, at January twenty twenty-five. Sorry, I'm writing this down, or I will forget it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. So we have the agenda with the addition of new business number three. A member on, replacing a member on animal control committee, starting January twenty twenty-five. Okay. Any public comments or questions on the agenda items? Sounds like the speakers are working really good tonight, aren't they? Had a minute to look over the minutes for the previous meeting.
It's really small.
That's for your transition, Linda.
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve the minutes for the October seventeenth regular city council meeting?
So may.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Rowan, seconded by Mr. Tatum, to approve the minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four city council meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. We actually have two letters for correspondence. One is from a Ms. Charlotte, it's for the C V Animal Control, it says, "Thank you for taking care of my sister's..." Oh, sister's dog Peanut, AKA, AKA Peanut, Penny. "My sister was a nineteen-year student of Cherokee, nineteen-year resident of Cherokee Village, and was very much enjoyed the natural beauty. Best wishes, Charlotte." The second one is a... She did? Oh, thank you, Ms. Charlotte. Think that was, was that the one that we worked on getting it, we getting, yeah, got the dog rehoned?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yeah. The other one was from a Ms. Candy, I got that right? Says, "Haven Dog Training," says, "Hello, wonderful C V A C people. I'm sorry this isn't more, but it is from two events I attended with a donation for C V A C, plus a little extra from me. I'm looking forward to our Christmas photo event in December," and she made a donation also. So, and they had a very good spay neuter, spay and neuter clinic out there this year. Any questions on the financials? I think right now, everything's, as far as the sales tax in, income, it's pretty, still pretty steady. We're still above expected incomes, revenue. So let's hope that holds true for the rest of the year. Guess we can go on to the mayor's report. That I just had laying here. What'd you do with it, Peter?
Coloring.
Coloring, okay. It said, "My November twenty twenty-four mayor's report," it says, "The month started out with the area seeing some moderate flooding in the town center. The water did not get close to the new highway bridge at town center. The bridge on Flathead Drive and the, and the bridge at the, the bridge on Cherokee Road by the golf course became impassable for about a day. The area received a large amount of rain in a twenty-four hour span that caused some flash flooding in town. I want to thank the street department for getting the bridges and roadways open quickly after the waters receded. I also want to remind people to not cross bridges or roadways that are flooded. The bank signature paperwork that we talked about last month is in the progress and should be completed by the end of the month." That reminds me, Mr. Jeff, did you sign?
He did.
He did?
All signatures.
All signatures, okay. "The second annual trunk-or-treat at the city hall went very well. The weather was great. We estimated somewhere between four hundred and fifty and five hundred people came through. There were twenty-one people slash businesses that set up and decorated for the children. At this time, we're working on the logistics of getting the electricity disconnected and removing the digital sign across from city hall. And I also want to note, add to the mayor's report, after I'd already filed this, I had a conversation with the R dot engineers that are over the bridge project and the West Plains Bridge Engrating Company official to answer Mr. Robb's question as far as the, the..."
The park?
The park. He said that they will be working in the park throughout the winter, and he said they'll, they will hope to be done early spring.
Okay.
And they'll be able, you'll be able to start doing some work in the park then. He also told me that they're planning on, I want to get the word out and start getting the word out now because it's going to be a... I figure there's going to be a lot of questions, but when we need to get the word out now that when they begin construction on the, the northern, or the bridge here by the old gas station, he told me that when they take the bridge out and close the highway for traffic, which he said they're planning on doing somewhere around June first of next year, he said there would be no highway access for Flathead Drive, so Flathead Drive won't have highway access there. The only access will be what they can get through the parking lot of the, the Copper Feather. So, he said that he hoped that with all the utilities being moved, that it would be just a simplicity of, you know, replacing the bridge and building the roadway back up, so they hope not to be closed and down as long as what they was on the original project, which honestly, most people that's probably been involved in construction, there really wasn't closed that long for the amount of construction that they had to do and utility relocation. But I just wanted to get that out there because we really need to let our constituents know because they're going to have to start doing some planning. So that's as much as I've got on now. Ms. Megan, anything to add on your animal control? I know that the spay neuter clinic went really well.
Uh, we had a good spay neuter clinic, um...
Speak into the mic, please.
Oh, yes. Um, I know we did like eighty-four animals in total, um...
Eighty-four.
The new building, the walls are up on it, and Mr. Thompson, if you want to add anything on the new building, I don't really know what else to tell them other than the buil, the walls are up, um, that's where we're at right now. We got two new volunteers that work in the office.
Good deal.
But that's helping me out.
That helps out a lot.
Yes. Uh, how many, just for the record, how many animals are you holding?
Right this moment, I have about twenty-eight dogs and I want to say seventeen cats.
Okay.
Seventeen cats.
Seventeen.
What's the longest period of time any animal's sitting there?
Right this moment, I have three dogs that have been there for, in a standard, over six months.
Over six months? Three dogs that's been there over six months?
And what's the, what's the maximum any of those three dogs has been, has been on location?
How long?
If you have, you have three do, three dogs that have been there over six months.
Yes.
What is the maximum any of those three animals have been on location?
What do you mean? What do you mean?
How long's the longest dog been there?
At this time, six months.
Okay, so they've been there six months?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything, Ms. Amanda, anything doing good on district court? Mr. Fire Chief, anything to add on the fire? Going good? Ms. Angela, planning zoning? Mr. Police Chief?
Is everything going good?
Going good? All right, animal control committee reports either Ms. Rachel or Mr. Steve, you want to give an update on that?
As of, as of today, Murphy Basement Company has moved off-site. That completes all of the concrete work, and next week, well, this weekend, weather permitting, will begin sealing the concrete with a spray sealer. And then next week, they'll be setting trusses and beginning to put the roof on the facility.
Good deal, so it's moving along. When, do you have an expected date of completion yet, or?
We're hoping that it's no later than mid-December.
Okay, good deal. A and P, Robb or Ms. Pam, want to add any? Talk about what's going on in A and P?
Nope, we're, uh, we're just moving along. I think we've got some stuff on the agenda tonight that we're going to be covering as far as filling in a new position.
Okay. Let me see, Airport Committee? They're doing pretty good out there. I was, actually, they've, they've got both the properties they've had purchased leased now, so they're doing good with that. The hangars are all completed, and I think they only have one vacancy, or may, they may have rented it by now, but they're, they're doing really well out there. The airport's doing good, and so is moving on into that, into the tri-county solid waste. So far, they're doing, they're still doing good. Mr. Bryan's kind of stepped down from the, the day-to-day running, but the new guy they have out there is kind of carrying on. Mr. Bryan left off, so they're still soluble at this time. They're still putting money in the bank, so... Kind of jumped there a little bit. Anyway, on the, on the old business, number one, what we had to do about the animal control, the vicious or aggressive dogs. Penny had got online on the listserv, which is an online register for all cities, city mayors, city clerks, and you can just pose a question on it and they can send you information. We actually had, I believe it was five cities, I believe five different cities send us their information on what they have for ordinances on vicious animals or aggressive animals. So I had sent that to Ms. Megan, and we're going to get that into the animal control committee to compare it to what we already have, you know, compared to the ordinance that we have, and compare it to what they have on record, and see what we can kind of do to where we can make ours, to make sure ours is enforceable by law, and if need be, we may have to amend it. So we're kind of, kind of in the limbo of getting everything, getting all the information compiled on that. Got it to our city attorney, so he's been reviewing it. He's got it to review, but it is a pile of paperwork. On the trash ordinance, the...
Hi, Mayor, if you don't care to back up to the animal control, we also talked about Monday night. I brought up, um, when the animal control committee has some time on their hands, I would, and I don't mind to help, I always want to put that out there, I don't mind to help, but I would love to see a educational program be put together that maybe we could get into the schools for early education on why it's important for pet laws, leash laws, spay and neuter. You know, because the, the more you, the younger you can get to people to understanding about, you know, being a responsible pet owner, the, the less this becomes a generational problem like what we've got right now. So that was something else we talked about Monday night to go along with that.
And the animal control committee meets?
Every, every, yeah, every second Tuesday at five o'clock.
Yeah, second Tuesday at five P. M. in this building.
And then when do the e-tickets, when does that start for, to where they can call after hours and?
Lieutenant's working on it right now. That's a process that has to be added to state police, we added to our e-tickets.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd have to give it...
The state police is a mercy, as far as, they let us know when they get that added to.
So when that gets up and running, we can use our Facebook and, and all that to get that out there to start letting citizens know that that's available and, like, what to do, who to call after hours, and how that's going to work?
Uh, as far as the e-tickets go, really all that does, that allows us, which we've always done it, but now that we've moved to e-tickets, the animal control citation is not added.
Gotcha.
We're going to get those added because we can write the same citations that animal control can.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it gives officers the ability to write them.
If we got a parking dog late, you know, it's such Maggie, get called out to deal with something, when I've got officers out that can deal with it at night.
Yeah.
We can do everything except for pick a dog up.
Right.
Call them on drugs.
Okay, great.
So number two, old business number two, the trash ordinance and contract. I'm just still waiting on, waiting on Waste Connections to get back with me. I sent an email.
Okay.
Just waiting on them to get back with me on that one, we can...
And just for the council members that weren't there Monday, what we discovered on that was the original, what they, what was defined at that time as contract was just the franchise fee.
Franchise agreement.
It's a franchise agreement. And then the secondary, whenever, I don't know, like, Robb, you were here, remember when we came back and there were some things that they weren't kind of meeting their end of the bargain?
Yeah.
And we sent the previous mayor back to handle that. Well, we found that, and all it is, it's just written on the amendment to our ordinance. So technically, by the attorneys, uh, because John was here that night, and we spoke about it, there is no contract with Waste Connections, unless Waste Connections can provide something on their end that says otherwise. So, we talked Monday night, and the mayor is going to get with them, and we thought that that original, it's supposed to be a contract, it's supposed to run out twenty twenty-five. So this would be the opportunity for it to come back to the city once a contract is made, and we can, anything that we've had problems with, that citizens have problems with, that can all go in there at that time. And so, and then it's up to city council, either we're going to continue to do this and have this contract, or city council can vote to, to not. So, but at the end of the day, once we get this settled and we have something to look at and vote on, that's when we have to make sure to, to go back and make sure it's in line with our ordinance. Because right now, what, you know, what they were doing and what they said was a contract was not in agreement with the ordinance.
Can I say something?
Yeah, Ms. Megan.
That piece of work that I sent to the business, um, that came directly from Kendrick Pedro.
Yes.
And that's what he said this was the contract that he had in.
Yes. Yes, but there's actually not a contract, yeah, and there never was.
So what gives the city the authority to do this? To make it exclusive that only one company, because that's six hundred thousand dollars if we figure half the population is actually paying, paying it for the year. About seventy-five bucks a quarter and seventy-five times four, da-da-da, times four.
It comes back to what we went...
Six hundred thousand dollars, and shouldn't we, if we're doing a contract or doing waste, now, since it's six hundred thousand dollars, shouldn't that be put out for bid? So we give other people the, I mean, it appears that we are... We are breaking the law.
Peter, this all comes back to what we went through before, when we even created that new ordinance. So when all this comes back before council, this will all be a discussion that this council will have. And like I said, the options are to, you can do away with the ordinance. You can leave it open to where there's, you know, you, you just have to get trash service if you can find a different company, so be it. This is all a conversation this council will have at that time.
But I, I still believe you should figure out what gives us the authority to do it, because if we don't have the authority, then that answers your question.
You're talking about the...
Yes, because the trash company goes to the cities, and a city like Hardy. Well, the city of Hardy is the one that they contract with to pick up the garbage, not the individual, but the city of Hardy. So the city of Hardy has that right. The other thing we can do is we can pass a, a garbage tax, so that every piece of property in Cherokee Village pays that tax. And that might be more revenue and give us an exclusive thing that we can contract out, whatever company gives us the best deal. And then we might have enough money left over to raise buildings and stuff. So, there might be other things to look into rather than just going down the street the same way. Thank you.
On the mi, on the old business number three, the Cherokee Village Advertising Promotions Department to fill a commissioned vacancy, I guess. Is Mr. Jonathan going to make a presentation on that, or no?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have a thing to present, I know you presented it last month, and you had some questions, I couldn't be here. If I can answer questions, I'm happy to, but you've already got the materials and...
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question on Monday night that we had discussed, finding out by tonight with the city attorneys, if the question was posed, does this go against the, what is said in the lawsuit? Did you get an answer for that?
Yes. Well, we talked about the law, when I called you about the lawsuit, Jody's, our city attorney, he said that there, he didn't see anything that would be illegal.
That's correct. That, I wrote a brief on it and sent it to the council, and that's my opinion. I didn't see anything that was a conflict.
There would be a legality conflict.
And then there was the question posed at the last meeting on finding out if it had to be the G M or if it could be a commissioner. Did we get clarity?
The way the state law states, it can only be the manager of the business, so that would be the G M, that's it. It has to be the owner or the manager?
Owner or manager.
Correct. It can't be a, a person on the board. It has to be the owner or the manager.
Well, I mean, you could debate whether the commissioners, I mean, the commission manages, doesn't own S I D, but the commission and the general manager manage the S I D.
There's only one general man, there's only one manager. Only person that has the ability to make decisions.
Well, that's actually not true.
No, it's true.
The commission makes the decision.
No, she makes the data, it's like a mayor. It's like a mayor. The mayor cannot legislate, which she cannot do, but she makes the day-to-day decisions for that entity.
Well, the, the commission, the S I D commission sets the budgets and sets policy. The general manager has...
That's legislation, yes, that's what they do. They legislate.
Right, so...
They are not managers, they're legislators.
Well, I'm, I don't want to debate, Peter, on what a manager means or not, but...
We got a lawyer there, he'll tell you.
All right, I mean, it, so the, the, the law, Arkansas law and the ordinance that we operate under says an owner or manager of a tourism business. So, the way that, the way that we wrote that in terms of our nomination was that that could be a commissioner or the general manager, but for the commission to decide that. That a member of the commission could sit, they could appoint a member of their, the S I D commission or the general manager.
Okay. When I looked at the law, and what I wrote my opinion based on was from the pure standpoint of can an S I D commissioner, based on the settlement, be on, you know, be appointed? Now, it didn't take into account whether there, you know, because the statute is specific about being a manager, it does have that, that stuff in there. So that could change the appointment. My opinion was just on can S I D commissioner be appointed, yes. But do they also qualify with the other parts of the statute, manager stuff, you know, that's, that does play in. And so that would be for the council to, to work out, because the, the law is pretty clear.
Right. So the only, so the only one that is a manager is the day-to-day operator of that entity, just like the mayor here. The mayor manages the city.
The way I read the statute, it seemed like the, they wanted the, the owner or manager of the business who was in town, who had received the benefits of the advertising promotions to be, to be on the commission. That's the way the statute read to me.
I agree with you.
I, if, if, you guys can present these facts to me, I can be, give a very specific answer based on, you know, more facts. And I can present that to the council.
So, Jody, are you saying tonight that, I'm sorry, I can't see through there. Are you saying tonight that, yes, it is strictly the G M, or are you saying you're, you're still not quite sure yet?
I'm going to say we should look into it further so I can give a definite answer. But for now, the way that it's leaning, it looks like yes on S I D, but it does have to fit the rest of the statute in that it does include management provisions. So we need to look into it a little deeper, maybe, to get an exact, on-the-point answer so we don't do anything wrong.
To see if a commissioner could be considered?
Well, that extra fact, not just, not just can an S I D commissioner be appointed, but can an S I D commissioner who might not be the manager, you know, of a company in town, if that also plays a...
I, I think what we're trying to decide tonight is can S I D represent us in the A and P? That's up to them. Um, I mean, this, this goes back to them. We're, we're not going to dictate to them who must show up at the door, but I think what we're asking the council for approval tonight is to allow a member of the suburban improvement district to join the A and P. That's all we're asking for tonight. Um, if, if, if the other needs to go on and move into something more definite, then I think we, we can address that. But, I mean, this is going to keep coming back because they're the, the largest contributor to tourism in Cherokee Village. So there, it, it's just, it's common sense that these people should be on a commission that does tourism. And also, for everything that we're doing on that commission, we always have to go to the suburban improvement district and ask their permission for parking, for buildings, for, for use of, of different things. This just streamlines that process for, for the A and P. That's all we're looking at doing. Uh, I think if we do need to delve into it and find out which particular person needs to be on the commission, I think we can do that later. But I do believe tonight, we can approve this the way it is.
No.
I would just say that without challenge, that, that sounds fine. I refer the council to discuss and, and work out based on, you know, my opinion.
The way the state statute reads...
If there's a challenge, then that's for the council also to deal with. I think it's outside of my purview.
Okay, that, that, but the way the state statute reads, you can either be an owner or a manager, okay? You cannot put a legislator on that commission because they don't have the authority to do the day-to-day operations.
Can I just say that, that actually, what you're saying, Peter, is contradicted by the practice because... Because two members of your council are serving on the commission, so in that sense.
But in the state statute, it says elected official.
Well, the.
Do you understand that?
The commissioners, the commissioners are elected.
Peter, hold on, let, let him answer, like I can't.
He's gotta read the whole ordinance, not just the part.
But I don't think you're, you're not, you didn't let him finish the point.
Peter, I've read the state law and the ordinance, which the ordinance is based on the state law. And so all I'm saying is by your rationale, you appoint two of your council members and you're the legislative body of the city.
We can appoint a mayor, we can appoint a council member, we can appoint a clerk. It's an elected official, doesn't have to be a council.
Well, but I'm just saying, for the last decade or so, you've had two council members serving on our commission.
I think what he's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jonathan, but I think what he's saying is by the rationale of you can't have a SID commissioner on there because they don't have authority, and, and, hold on, and they'd have to go back and talk to SID. You've got the same thing with council members. We sit on there and we make decisions without having to come back to council and ask first.
So the way, yeah, and our rationale, Peter, just to, yeah, and our rationale, Peter, was just to say that we, there's a precedent for, for someone from SID serving on the commission, and we.
And that I have no problem.
And, and, and we wanted to, to bring someone else from SID on to the commission. We wanted to, we're fine, I think the commission is fine for the general manager to serve on the commission. We were just, the way that we drafted it was, we wanted to leave the commission, the five-member commission, the ability to make that decision whether it was one of them or the general manager. I think the commission's fine for the general manager to be the representative. The former general manager was the one who served on our commission, so we don't have a problem with that.
But in the context that you're saying that SID is a business, that's, that's how you're pulling it onto the commission.
Well, but not, let me, let me say more important is there, more important is a business, they're a tax collector. So they're an AMP tax collector. So they, they collect the AMP tax.
Which, which fills the business of either the restaurant or the campground.
Or, or they're, when they rent out a recreational facility for an event.
Right, so, so what I'm saying is you're getting, now that's, that's the business that, that for the state statute says, yeah, we, we, we can do business. And I understand that, makes perfect sense to me. But you can't, you, you have to follow the rest of the state law that says owner, which we don't have an owner of SID unless everybody gets a vote in the city of Cherokee Village. Or manager, and the manager's the only one that can run the day-to-day operations of that. If you stick a commissioner on there, it might, you know, be different than what the manager is, is letting happen.
I think, I think you're looking for a legal opinion, which I can't give you of what constitutes an owner. I would say, based on my know, but based on my knowledge of SID, you know, in terms of their authority to enter into contracts and to do things, it rests with, it, it only rests with certain individuals there.
No, it rests with the whole lot. It's, it's like a legislative.
Okay, guys, I think we could probably just jump over this conversation and just simply say that the council will approve the AMP to bring on the general manager of the suburban improvement district. Leave it at that. We can approach the suburban improvement district and see what they say. Uh, can we not do that tonight?
Back up just a second. I think what we would have to do is we would approve the position to be filled by someone from, a representative of SID. And then when Jody gets the formal opinion of, does it have to be the GM or can it be a commissioner? That, that ball would be put in SID's court. All we're doing is approving for the SID, or for the AMP position to be filled.
By an SID representative.
By representative.
Depending on what he says and, and what they agree on, that would be the general manager, or not. I mean, are we all good with that? Just that language?
I would like to ask a question if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Make sure to get the mic.
So, at this point, if we, if we're setting that issue aside for the moment, is the floor still open for discussion as to why or why not a representative from SID should be on the commission? Is the floor still open for that?
Yes.
We're open.
Okay.
Floor's open for discussion.
And I would like to take the position that that would be not only bad optics, given the cr, in light of the calcule lawsuit, but also, I don't know of a single member, past or present, of the AMP commission that has ever approached a judge in a court of law to enjoin the city in a lawsuit that was deemed by that court to not be a party to the contract. And point of fact, one law firm submitted a bill for an excess of twenty-two thousand dollars to this city after the SID manager and counsel for SID carried forth a motion to the judge in the water company lawsuit. Now, I don't know a single other member of the business community out there that forced a lawsuit on the city, or forced the city to participate in, in a lawsuit that cost the taxpayers of this community for one law firm over twenty-two thousand dollars. Now, maybe the mayor is aware of the attorney, Mr. Eichmann's bill at this point. But I'm sure he wasn't working for free. But when the settlement of that lawsuit occurred, the city was found to not have any role in that lawsuit whatsoever. And in fact, some comments that came from some of the council, uh, from the, some of the SID commissioners was that they felt that the city, it wasn't appropriate for the city to be in that law, in that proceeding. On that basis alone, I would object to having a member of SID sit on a commission that we have the chairman in front of us right now, who has sat before this council in either planning meeting or an open meeting, and said, we have no jurisdiction whatsoever as to the day-to-day activities of the commission. And in fact, it took this city council to refuse the permit for the Ferris wheel.
Are we gonna go somewhere with this, or you're just gonna carry on?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm making my point. If you don't mind, Mr. Smith, I'm, I'm making my point, if you don't mind, sir.
It's laborious.
Do you, do you wanna ask for additional time, or, or you want me to stop where I am? And you wanna make a point?
I'd just like to go home tonight.
I've only had a few minutes to, you know, go down a whole litany of issues. I'm sorry, are you chairing this meeting, or is the mayor?
It seems like you are.
I asked for time for comment from the mayor.
Benyon.
So, one, we're being asked to approve some, uh, an entity that has brought this city into a lawsuit and cost it, cost it money. Secondly, when that lawsuit was settled, this council, this mayor brought forward this council into a special call meeting to follow the instructions of the court and the city's attorney to get approval for us to accept the fact that that lawsuit was being settled. And both the current SID manager and the current chairman of that commission, if I'm correct, Mr. Mayor, they went into your, they came into your office and demanded that you not carry out the instructions of the city attorney, not, not the city attorney, but the council that we had been hired, and the court. And in fact, threatened yet another legal proceeding. So I say all that to point out that it's a bad track record in as recently as the settlement of the water department lawsuit and those proceedings. And I for one think, think it is a bad idea to put someone from that commission, whether it's a commissioner or the manager, onto this AMP commission. Because they've acted like no other business owner in, in such a manner to cost this city money and time.
I have a question.
I'll concede my time at this point.
I have a quick question. Is, so, is it your opinion that it's not a problem with SID being a representative on AMP? It's who is on SID commission and general manager?
My, my point is, it is a patently bad idea to put anyone from SID on the AMP commission.
Ever.
Period. And, and we're, we're asked, are we willing to do this at this time? And I'm saying, no, at this time, no. I will concede your point, maybe something in the future, but I, again, I yield my time.
Mr. Tatum, you got something?
I'll have to agree with Mr. Thompson here. I think in light of all the lawsuits and the issues with SID, I think it's a very bad idea.
Is there a motion on the table, Mayor?
There has not been a motion, it's merely on the floor for discussion.
I do have one more question, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
It's on the floor for discussion.
Both of you guys. So, since AMP is such a specific entity of what we deal with, what is the concern and fear there, not fear, concern? Of one person having a voice about voting on AMP dollars being spent on advertising for Cherokee tourism? Like, what, what is the, I get the, the lawsuits in the past and everything that's happened, but what would be the, the major concern of what might happen with them sitting there?
Do you, you want me to respond to that, or does someone else want to?
Both of you can.
We didn't think that was gonna happen until the lawsuit come up with the water company, it just come out of the middle of nowhere. I mean, Lord knows, that's my opinion.
But are you saying like, you're concerned that a, a lawsuit could come up on, because of AMP or?
Well, yeah, I'm concerned, I think personally, the SID's an entity, the city's an entity. AMP was created by the city, I think they need to be separate.
My, my, my opinion on, since everyone's stating their opinion, is I understand everybody's concern about the lawsuits and where they landed us. I feel like this AMP thing is, it's not a contract with SID. It's not dollars being exchanged with SID. The commission works in black and white state law. And their goal as a commission, is a hands-on commission to promote this city. And with SID being such an entity in Cherokee Village and, you know, dollars spent on tourism and their need for advertising and building, I think it's a way for, it, it's important for Cherokee Village and SID to kinda maybe even possibly mend stuff that's in the past, and this is a good opportunity to do it. But hands down, SID fills the criteria to be on AMP commission. And their goal is to not be in contract with it, but to literally promote the city. So that's just my opinion on SID being on there.
Should I make a motion now?
Yes.
I make a motion that we turn it back to AMP and have them give us three different entities to choose from. Come back with the three different entities, and we'll choose one of the three.
And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Martin, I don't mean to prevent you from putting forward a motion. But the motion that was brought forward to this council in the previous meeting, which was tabled, was to allow what Mr. Smith presented. And that was to allow a member of SID to be on the AMP commission. That motion was tabled. So tonight, we took that motion back up.
Okay.
And that, that's really the motion that's on the table at this point. I'm not trying to say.
Since, since I don't have a second, I, I understand that. And if that was the motion that was brought back to the table, everybody, is that the motion that was brought back to the table?
Yes, it is.
And we got an answer from the lawyer.
I call for the question. Let's vote on it.
You rescind your, you rescind your motion?
I rescind my motion, I didn't know there was a, a.
And you call for the question.
I call for the question.
So need a.
A motion, I motion to, um.
No, the, the motion's already on the table.
Yeah, the mo.
So we're gonna vote on the motion.
And it's the, the motion on the table is to allow the Cherokee Village Advertising Promotion to appoint a SID representative to serve on the AMP commission. Did I get that right, lawyer? Did I get that right, city attorney?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, we're supposed to have a second.
Roll call vote.
We need a second on that, or is it when he calls for the question? I wanna make sure we do it right.
It, it was, we, we.
When he calls for the question, do we?
When he calls for the question, the council can table, to answer the question, or they can move to.
So we don't have to do a second?
Well, I mean, we.
You don't have to do a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Ishmael, there we go.
Yeah, I need to second.
So, uh, we're gonna do a roll call vote, please, Ms. Angela. And just for clar, clarify, it's to allow the Cherokee Village Advertising Promotions Committee to fill a seat with a SID representative.
Mr. Tatum?
No.
Ms. Rowland?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Tatum?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ishmael?
No.
Denied.
So, I would like to go back to, I would like to go back to making a motion that they bring us.
We can ma, make a request.
A, a request, or however we have it, so that when this comes back against, when it comes back to us, that we have more than one option. I don't care if it's two or three.
Okay, now is that up for discussion?
Sure.
Yes.
We've been searching.
I don't think you realize how impossible it is for us to find anyone that will work hard enough to be on this committee. We've had a vacancy now for almost a year, and it's not because, for lack of trying.
Rob, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I wouldn't even say work hard enough. That's not the problem. You can't even find anybody who wants to be a part of it.
We can't find anybody to do, I mean, to find three pe, three entities to fill this position, I'm gonna tell you right now, that is virtually impossible. It is almost impossible to find one person to do it.
Mr. Jonathan and Mr. Attorney? Uh, and I know it would probably take some kind of amendment to the establishment of the AMP ordinance that's there, but I know the AMP ordinance that's there has specific requirements on who can, and, you know, the positions of who can.
Yes.
Fulfill. Is there a way to make an amendment to that, to where we can ease it up a little bit, because?
We have one position at large, could we make that two positions at large?
No.
Well, I, just to, I mean, just to tell you.
Because, because our, because our, hold on, because we're so, Cherokee is limited in what we have to offer for the restaurant and lodging, to make it, it makes it difficult to fill that position. I just wonder, maybe we can pose a question to the attorney to come back, and maybe there's a way to.
I can, I'll at least respond in my opinion, Mayor, if you.
Yeah, go ahead, I asked you up here.
Yeah, my opinion is, let the, let us go back to the commission to report that the city denied the appointment. And we'll, I'll do the best I can to try to explain that, although I'm not really for sure why.
We'll get some information.
Yeah, if you, I mean, if, if you could somehow articulate to me succinctly what, why, what the denial was based on, that would be helpful for me to give that to the commission. But then let us, the commission, it's the commission's job to make that appointment, we did that, it's your job to approve it. So let me just go back to the commission, get, report back to them what the council decided tonight. Let the commission decide if they want to put another appointment forward. And if, if we feel that we can't do that and we need help because of the, because of the ordinance, then I think the commission should signal that and come back to the council. But at this time, I, I think it's written in state law for a reason, and, and, and so we're, let us go back to the drawing board. I would say to Mr. Martin that we, if we bring someone forward, we will make another appointment as, as, as dictated by the ordinance. Take that to you, and then it's the council's decision to approve or not.
I would suggest if SID has a manager that manages the restaurant, soft cop course, or a manager that manages the, uh.
or a manager that manages the, uh.
Event rental?
Yeah, so if they have a specific person that manages that, then that, I think, will fill the state requirement that I'm looking for. That's why I said, I don't think it should be commissioners, it should be the manager. Now, if they have hired a manager, it could be a golf, you know, the manager of the golf course. Okay. So, he's still doing the thing, but there's the manager that they have for that. And so, the manager can be put on, but not the people sitting on SID.
We would still, the, the AMP would still need some kind of clarification as to why they were turned down for an SID.
No, they don't need any clarification.
Uh, that's what we're asking for, Peter. Why, why should we bring another person forward for this council just to say no again? The council needs to clarify why they don't want SID involved in city business, so we can just completely back away from it. But, uh, we can't just keep bringing people to the council, um, over and over again from the same company and, and have the council say no every time for, for various reasons.
Yes, you can, that's how government works. That's what happens. That's what they do all the time.
Anyway, we can discuss it all night until the cows come home, so let's move on. Because we got old business number four, which is Resolution 2024-17, which is a resolution to authorize the disbursement of the ARPA funds for purchase of replacement computers and software for administrative, mayor's office, and street department. Whereas the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, which was signed into law March of 2020, provided physical relief funds to the state and local governments and other programmed areas aimed at mitigating the continuing effects of the pandemic. And whereas the City of Cherokee Village received funding from ARPA, one of the eligible uses of ARPA funds is expenditure for operations. And whereas, in order to comply with legislative audit and municipal accounting requirements, and whereas the current computers and software are old and outdated, it is now therefore resolved by the City Council of City of Cherokee Village with the concurrence of the mayor to appropriate the, it's the remaining ARPA, ARPA dollars. It's eleven thousand, one hundred, eleven thousand, one hundred, that's not right. Eleven thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars and zero cents. And that includes the interest, which is one hundred thirty-eight dollars, eleven cents, for the purchase of replacement computer and software equipment.
Make a motion, we approve it. Second.
Motion by Mr. Tatum, seconded by Mr. Martin to approve Resolution Number 2024-17. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Angela.
Ms. Rowland?
Yes.
Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Tatum?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ishmael?
Yes.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you all. Moving on into new business, we got special use permit 2024-16, which is the Christmas in the Village.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Do what? And the Christmas in the town center will be December 2nd at, what time, Mr. Jonathan? I think it's, is it five? Yeah, five o'clock. Yeah. So, anybody on December 2nd, they'll have the Christmas lighting here in the town center at the gazebo at five o'clock on December 2nd. Mr. Ishmael made the motion, it was seconded down here. Mr. Martin seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, the motion passes, thank you. Uh, number two is the proposed 2025 city budget.
This just for us to review?
It's up here, the council's got copies of it, there would be copies, there are copies available to the public if needed. Just ask, ask myself or Ms. Misty over there, and we can get you a copy of it. Uh, we've kinda been combing through this thing since, wouldn't we start in July?
Yes.
Combing through this thing, trying to get it lined out. It's, uh, it's, it's pretty well streamlined as well as we can get it. Mr. Paul, thank you for your help, Mr. Paul. He's come in with his computer and can work it up real quick. Uh, right now, projected is may, is possible a hundred and sixty thousand dollars deficit, it's, which is expenses over revenue. If I remember correctly, Mr. Smith, wasn't it one forty-seven that we thought last year?
Uh, it looks like it was seventy-three thousand that we were looking at last year as our projected deficit. And, uh, we're actually looking at seventeen thousand instead of seventy-three thousand on that.
Yeah. So, we're actually, we're, uh, as far as the revenue, we're up about probably over sixteen percent now. It was up like sixteen, it's probably closer to seventeen percent. Revenue's doing really well, about coming up, so. So, anyway, the, I know the council's got the handouts they can kinda look over and everything, and. I mean, I'll be honest with you, we've, we've combed this thing left, right, and up and down. I don't know how much more you can, I don't know how much more you can cut out.
I have a question, if I can, since it, it's kind of about budget, but kinda not. Um, since we talked so much about all of this Monday night, I do have a question to pose to the council. Should we change our Monday night meeting time or date? Uh, cause I know the, like, most of the meetings on Monday night, it's been just me and Heather for a long time. And then, Rob, you were with us this past Monday. Could we, could we bring that up and see if there's a date or a time change that would be preferable for everyone else?
Yeah, we can get together, we're, we're pretty close to the first of the year when we, we have to set meeting times and dates anyway, so we can, we can get together amongst us and see what's is good and see what do you think? See what times and dates have worked the best for everybody. Cause I mean, I, I don't, and, uh, like I told Mr. Smith, I said, maybe I'm not a good politician because I don't sugarcoat stuff sometimes, but I don't mind meetings when meetings are productive. But if people are not gonna participate in meetings, we're wasting time having them. And that's, that's, that's kinda where I stand with that. So, I mean, I don't mind to have the meetings, but if we're gonna have them, we gotta participate. So, yeah, we can greatly discuss if a different time and date would work better.
So, you wanna do that in December or January, or?
Yeah, we can, we can discuss it and kinda, yeah, if you wanna discuss what dates was, we can have it ready for December. Kinda, just take over what dates, because we're gonna vote on it anyway.
So, if all the council members wanna just kinda look at their schedules and figure out a good date and time before our regular meeting, we can all come to the table with that in December and maybe work to find something that better suits everyone.
Works for me.
My question on the budget, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yeah.
I just wanna ask the department heads, or y'all, I know you can't get everything you want. Are you happy with the budget set up for the next year? Cal?
He didn't hear.
No, I didn't hear.
I was just asking, I know you can't have everything you want, but on this budget, are you pretty happy with what you're getting for the next fiscal year?
From what I've seen is, I have a good feeling, just to make sure.
That's my question, alright.
Okay.
Um, could I entertain, I mean, could you entertain a motion, a motion that we vote on it?
Before we vote on it, I do have a quick question. I know back when we had our roundtable meeting about the budget, uh, we had spoke about, Mayor, you finding out, um, which I don't, I don't know if it went any, if the discussion ever went any further with the budget committee about, uh, you coming back and letting us know, like, what it would take if, if the budget committee or the council decided to go forward trying to do a sales tax, with what it would take and how much and what kinda timeline we had. Did, did anyone ever get any of that information?
From, from what I've talked to the, the city attorney about, I got a, uh, me and him talked, and I talked to Ms. Tanya, which she's at the Sharp County Clerk's Office, and she does the election stuff, and it takes care of the election, that, uh, unless, she said that, uh, if we do an election on a, or if we do a motion, or, I'm sorry, do a sales tax and put it on the ballot to be voted on by the people, unless we do it on a even numbered year of general election, the city would be responsible for the entirety of the cost of the election. She said if we do it on a general election year, she said that they would, we would split it with the county. The county would pay the biggest brunt of it, and the city wouldn't have to. She said that, uh, of course, you have to get your signatures, it's just, you have to get, you know, the council would have to propose it, uh, get the signatures to get it on to the ballot, and they'd have to be certified. Uh, the signatures, I can't, I can't remember exactly what she said, because it's a, it's a percentage of the last, the number of the last people that voted in the last general election. So, it'll be a percentage of who voted in this last election. She said, and then, uh, it'll get, it can get it on the ballot. She said probably, take probably forty-five day, you know, probably need to get this done at least forty-five, sixty days before then, so they can have time to get all the paperwork done to get it on the ballot, but.
So, is that something that the budget committee's discussing right now? Or is that something that this council needs to discuss, or, or have we just moved on from that? Like, I, I just, we, we've brought it up several times, but it just never goes anywhere to make a decision.
I know, uh, in, you know, any, anytime you say the word tax, people cringe.
Absolutely.
They, they definitely cringe, understandably, I'm, I'm one of them, you know, uh, but. You know, we try to operate as close to the vest as we can. I mean, I can tell you, since I've been here, it, we don't have a whole lot of extra frills. It's pretty well, we pretty well clo, play it close to the vest. I mean, we're not going out and spending money, you know, sorry for the cliche, but all, we, we're not spending money willy-nilly. We, we, we have to be very calculated in what we spend money on, because it, at the end of the year, there's, as you say by the budget, there's not a lot left. So, eventually, we're gonna come up against the brick wall, and it's, it's going to be, it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to be discussed, and it's gonna have to be really gotten out to the public to understand why it's needed and what we're doing. I mean, one of the main questions, like we talked about in the working meeting, is so far, we've been really good at providing the same city services. At some point, that's gonna stop. At some, and it may be next year, I really don't, you know, I don't know how the budget's gonna play out, but at some point, you know, we, we can only be in a deficit for so long. When the bank account says you gotta start making cuts, you're gonna have to make some cuts. And, and I can tell you from looking at the budget that we're doing this year, you're, you're talking about cutting departments.
Yeah, there's not much.
That's not, that's not an employee, that's department, you're cutting whole departments.
Or, or there's no raises, that's.
Yeah, I mean, well, no, that's even beyond that. I mean, that's a hundred and sixty thousand's beyond that. You're talking about, you know, you know, animal control is a hundred thousand dollar budget. You know, that, that don't cover a hundred and sixty, you know? So, I mean, you're talking about cutting whole departments. So, as much as I don't personally like it, my personal, my personal doesn't have anything to do with the business part of being mayor, because I see the reality is eventually, we're gonna hit the brick wall, and it's either, it's gonna, we're, we're either going to have to get really serious about doing something to get some kind of revenue, more revenue coming in, or, or you're talking about closing departments then.
Just like Pam said, I mean, I, I feel like we've all kinda chatted about it a little bit for the last six months. I think we kinda started our conversations at the beginning of budget committee, uh, in July. And I would say this, either we, we as a council either need to put a committee together to really focus on where the city can find money. And I also think that we should, just like we revamped starting budget as early as we did, and it paid, it's paying off. We're, you know, getting numbers out by November. Uh, you know, we, we need to hit the ground running and start that, those discussions in January.
Hmm.
And whether that's all members, you know, if a Monday night meeting turns into a, how the city can make revenue, or if we need to just pick a committee on the council, but I think we, we can't push it back. I agree with you, because we've cut, 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 and we're still getting a three percent raise in revenue every year. But then, expenses are going up by three plus more, and we're not, we are still not breaking even.
Yeah, I mean, we're, I mean, we can just, we can be honest with ourselves, we're, we may have went up sixteen percent in revenue, but expenses went up twenty-one percent. I mean, I know I'm pulling that out of my hat a little bit, but the, the, the expenses went up greater than the, you know, we had a great year with, it's a great year with the revenue coming in, but that just means everything else went up too. Go ahead, Mr. Steve.
Well, and just looking through the budget, which, you know, I really appreciate what the committee's done in terms of preparing the budget, but, you know, we've had significant grant money. ARPA, we can look at a lot of different supplemental things that came from both the state and federal in terms of supplementing, which provided a great deal of capital for both the fire and police departments. Those grants, I don't see that, one, we have none of those grants in hand at this point. We're not carrying over any kinda grant balances or any of that. So, uh, in time that's really close, in which we have to have a viable, back to Ms. Rowland's point, there has to be a viable solution, and the only thing past budget groups, current budget groups, have been able to ascertain has been falls down in an increase in the sales tax. Because I do believe that the fire department is still, uh, not at full staff. Is that a fair?
We're not, no, we're not anywhere close to staff when we work fire.
Okay.
But the other half, my largest concern going forward is fire replacement. In case you all, well, if you all live there, it's a good start to business, but pretty fair balance. New fire is like what we operate, it's about five hundred thousand. We got four of them. The newest one is two thousand eight.
And we.
It's rolled up on a twenty-year-old tire, which, which I maintain will, will keep them in service. But this is last year, I spent over twenty thousand dollars for a, for a green bill on the voltage. Things like that are gonna continue to happen. So, part of what I've done, my budget this year is try to move some regular recurring bills, by fact-based period group budget to the city budget, because we can save that day period group budget and spend it on something like that, or matching or whatever. Today, we can spend every dollar, that's just to make the energy.
Yeah. And then.
I don't want to strain on the city budget, but I mean, something's gonna have to get it at some point.
And, and to go back to what Mr. Steve was talking about, just to let everybody know, I know our, our limited audience here, but the, the YouTube audience is that the purchases made in new police vehicles, and the purchase made in the new fire apparatus, and the purchases made with the, the new computer equipments is only being done because of the city receiving ARPA, ARPA money from the federal government in, you know, in twenty twenty. And the street, and the street department materials that they've been using to do the roads. So, the, them projects are, was only able to be done because of monies from ARPA, so.
We're still short in the street department as well, aren't we? Yep, very much so.
Yeah, very much.
So, this is what I would like to put in front of this council is, um, by January, I would like to see us come together and plan some meetings, and I, I wouldn't like to see this be a committee. I would like this to be the entire council. I think that we have some very serious discussions that we need to have, and I think we need to start doing some very serious planning for the future. And I, I know this is not a, I don't wanna hit a sore spot, but, uh, you know, there's a lot of discussion about SID right now and what happens when the assessment runs out for them. And I think they have a planning committee that, that's kinda working on that. But I think the citizens as a whole think that the city's gonna take on some of those, um, somebody help me with the word?
Responsibilities.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, you know, there should be planning on that side, but we've gotta have planning on this side as well. You know, if, if you start seeing things go away, you're talking about property values. You start seeing departments go away, you're gonna have a rotting city. And that's just a fact. So, I would like to challenge ourselves to start these meetings, and as many people show up as possible, and let's start having these conversations and getting some plans.
Well, maybe when we discuss if we need to have a new date, date and time for a working meeting, let's pick a date and time for, I don't know what we want to call that kind of meeting.
If we want to utilize our, our working meetings.
That's fine too.
To, to focus on this, we could do that as well.
We gotta get, we gotta all get there.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there's, there's a big mountain in front of us and I just feel like for a while now, we've been, you know, because we were underwater and then trying to fight our way to the surface. And kudos to all of our department heads, because I don't know how in the world you've done what you've done. Kudos to the budget committee as well for working through this.
Big thanks to Misty.
Well, well, and the girl, absolutely, the girls too. Uh, when I say department head, I mean, all of you guys, you know that. So, um, but we've got a big challenge and I think there's some major conversations that, that need to be had.
Can I say, going back about the sales tax? You know, we have, we would have to pay if we don't do, like the mayor said, if we don't do it enough even a year.
In the record, general election.
Pay Sharp County and Ford County.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a pretty good chunk of money. And think about that if it doesn't pass.
Yep.
Work out, and I'm, I'm not going to say an amount, but it's quite a bit of money. And that would really mess up our.
I don't think that this council could possibly get the paperwork together for two thousand twenty-five anyway. So you're looking at two thousand twenty-six for that. Uh, I mean, we're, we're going to have to get together and talk about a whole advertising campaign.
You need to advertise for a year.
Town hall meetings to explain to people what's going on, explain what these numbers that we're looking at, uh, mean and what they mean to them. On top of this, I mean, we, we need more businesses in Cherokee Village. Um, we, we've got spaces out on the highway that could be taken up and, and those could go into, I mean, it just, anything we could do to round out a business somewhere, one more restaurant, uh, coming into Cherokee Village would pretty much set us up for thirty-five, forty thousand dollars for a year. Uh, it's just a matter of bringing someone into the city to do that.
I'd love to see another retail business move in, out on the foreline.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, just what DG has done for us.
If somebody knows of, if somebody knows of one or got a hookup for one, well, come see me. I will, we'll do what we can do to get them, to accommodate it, to get them in.
Waffle Hut there in Pearl Grove, uh, he needs to open another franchise. Uh, he would be a perfect opportunity for him.
Yes, after the first of the year, we'll get, we'll get together and set planning meetings for sure.
So in the meantime, council members, I would, I would challenge you all and myself to start kind of making some notes about some ideas or outside the box thinking that you might have and be prepared to, to bring that when we start doing this.
Yep.
Nothing, nothing's too weird as long as it's inside the, the wall.
Yeah, exactly.
There you go.
All righty, new business number three, which was added is the, is, uh, what are we gonna? Oh, okay, I'm right, I got ahead of you, Mr. Ralph, go ahead, go ahead with you.
Uh, I'd like to motion that we approve the budget as presented.
Motion by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Tatum to approve the twenty twenty-five budget as presented. Roll call vote, please. Hold on.
Is there, I do have one question perhaps that can be addressed and that was a fact on the P and Z budget. And forgive me, I had made a note earlier, but, and I did not make the planning meeting. But I thought, and perhaps I can be corrected, that we had, because of the addition of the part-time person, this is specifically the planning and zoning budget. And line item six oh three five for twenty-five thousand. It was my understanding and I'll be the first to admit that I'm wrong, but I thought that we had decided that this was not going to be a budget item. Due to the fact that we had hired a part-time person to assist Charlie in P and Z.
That was what was added. Yeah, the, yeah, he, the guy that's going to, working right now is going to go to full-time at the first of the year.
Okay, and I, and, and my issue is not, my issue is not his position.
Yeah.
My issue is line item six oh three five, I'm sorry. It shows under.
Contract services.
Contract services, is that, that person or is it that the landscaping slash mowing contract that was discussed?
That was put in just in case we wanted to revisit that. Not that we are, because we can't without the city council vote. But that was put in as, in just in case. We would like to revisit.
We're not voting on the budget tonight, we're just.
He just asked.
There's, there's a motion on the floor to be voted on.
To pass the, without.
But we decided it can't be spent unless the contracts go out and the council all agrees.
But if you put it in the budget, it can be spent, correct lawyer?
Yes.
Thank you. So.
But we can't enter into a contract unless it goes in front of the city council and it's under contract services.
Correct, but it's, it's in the budget and it can be moved anyplace you want it to in the budget because you have the authority to do that.
Not without going to the council's vote. I gotta have council's approval.
You have to vote, council has to vote.
It'd have to be a line item change.
Move a line item.
Yeah, yeah, I can't move it without the council's vote.
When did that start?
It's always been that way.
Back to when John Kylo was over the street road department.
Yeah.
Came in line item by line item. We've been doing that for years.
I mean, besides that, I wouldn't do that without council's approval. Like I, like I told you, I'm not going to jail for anybody.
So the budget committee's discussion on that was, uh, the new guy that got hired, uh, that was part-time is going to be changed to full-time for twenty twenty-five. He's going to be a code enforcer. And then Charlie can do his mixture of building maintenance, code enforcement and managing his department. And then the city's lawns and grounds are taken care of by a contract service. And the twenty-five thousand that we had on there, uh, in our discussions were, was that contract not starting until, um, April first, correct?
It wouldn't start till at least April, but maybe May.
Well, the grass is growing, but, I mean, so.
But that's even if, if we decided.
That's the fourth month in, so we calculated it deducting three months off the, um.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. My question is, is that my, my impression of the P and Z department was in lieu of that contract, that we would have a full-time person assisting Charlie with specifically those duties. And I thought we were, it was an either or, not an and.
I can't attest to that. All I can say is the reason it was put in there was just in case we decided to go with some kind of contract labors for the lawn services summer. It wasn't a definite yes we was. It was if we decided to, we would go put it out for bid and then we would have one hundred percent concrete rules and the bid process and how the bid process gets opened at a city council man, meeting in front of city council members. If we decided to do it. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a guarantee that we are going to do it, but.
Mayor, also, um, we did the figures about having a, an employee, the cost of having a full-time employee would benefit. And the cost of what, what the twenty-five thousand.
And then.
You know, and, and, and to my knowledge, us as a council has never really just sat down, like, at a given working meeting where we could hash that out or whatever about discussing how our department head who should be in charge of code enforcement and building maintenance and everything else is now blowing leaves with a handheld blower and going out and mowing and po- possibly this code enforcer guy is having to go help him mow now and not getting to do the code enforcement job. So it's like, we as a council need to decide what's important for planning and zoning to have and who's in charge of what and what's getting done. And my personal opinion on that is that the department head of planning and zoning should not be in charge of mowing all the city's properties. But we've, we've never talked, I mean, nobody's ever talked about it. So us as a budget committee made those choices and put them in there. And of course, we can talk as much as y'all want to, but that's kind of where we came up with the importance of all that and putting it in there.
I mean, is there, is there a different verbiage here that would make, uh, you, you comfortable, Mr. Thompson? As far as contract service, could we say lawn care? And then the way that's handled is, is put forward or?
I guess I would just, you know, back to Mr. Martin's point, um, you know, about the fact you put it in the budget. We're now saying that it's an approved, you know, to go forward so long as we don't exceed. But I would be more in favor of striking it from the budget. And then if P and Z supervisor, Mr. Akers comes forward and says that this really is, is a need with the, you know, given the fact that he is getting a full-time employee when he didn't have one, um, that we could vote to come back and revisit the budget and add it to the department at a later date. I don't see the need to have it in the budget at this point.
Uh, I would say just for expediency, uh, we could strike that on, I mean.
Working in planning and zoning, you have, uh, Charlie, who up until we hired Robert, he was doing, um, the supervi- he was the supervisor, he was city inspector, he was code enforcement, he was building the ground. He was our lawn guy, you know, he did, he worked five paths. Now we finally got Robert here and Charlie can handle the inspections that need to be happening. And Robert can handle the code enforcement issues that need to be addressed. But they can't do those things if five days of the week they're on mowers or if they are blowing leaves doing ground maintenance.
I don't think that's the question at hand. I think we all agreed with you before you even said that.
Yeah.
He's, uh, he's majoring in minors. He's doing a lot of small stuff, but he's not getting the big stuff done. The only question that Mr. Thompson has at this point is why does it have to be in here now? Uh, when, when, when March comes around and, and you see it coming, it can come back to the city council. Um, as the mayor has said, uh, take bids, find out what those bids are. You may end up with a bid for thirty-two thousand dollars and that's all you can get from somebody and that's what the council will have to approve or not.
Can we discuss that, Rob? We think our max, we think our max contract for a twelve-month contract would be thirty-three thousand dollars. Cause that's a thirty thousand dollar contract and then they're going to get, do sales tax on top of that. So we're capping it at thirty-three. And if we have to cap it at thirty-three, then bids have to come in under thirty-three. And the only reason we put twenty-five is because we weren't going to start this year, we weren't going to start that till April, but.
Well, we, we were doing this to make this easier in the process, so all we had to do was go directly to that. But I think Mr. Thompson and, and, uh, I, I think we have two members on the council right now that are concerned that it is in there. Uh, it doesn't necessarily have to be used for that, it can be moved somewhere else. I think at this point, if we could concede and allow them to take that twenty-five thousand out, then we can come back and revisit it at the time that it's needed. Uh, we just can't get the cart before the horse again. Last time we got bids and stuff in, but we didn't have a way to pay for the bids.
We are, I, I think we're doing it right by, by putting it in the budget. It'd be like, you know, street department wanting a new hire and us saying, let's not put it in the budget right now. But when Joey wants a new hire, we gotta go back and approve whatever. I mean, this, this contract service is acting as a new hire for planning and zoning. So I feel like if we.
And I would, I would concede that, I would concede your point. If it, if it is indeed the intent of the mayor and the department head, that this is an expenditure that's going to happen anyway. It's a moot point whether it goes in now or it goes in in April. I, I would concede the point. I mean, I, my, I was just trying to get over the hurdle of previous conversations where it was an either or, it was an either a full-time person and no contract or a part-time person and a contract. And now we're at full-time person and contract. If that's where we are, let's just put it out there and say that's what it is, that you're going to get a contract. Even though you're going to put bids out there, but if the intent is of the mayor and the department head that they're going to do a contract in April, then let's just move on and go ahead and include it. And I'll take my objection off the table.
Well, and I'd like to say that, you know, if the contract was started in April, we would have to start getting bids early, you know, um.
Yeah, that's start of January first.
November, we probably wouldn't even talk about it till January and then get it in the paper. That takes a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Give people so many weeks and then you gotta wait for the council to rip through the bids. So here you are back in March already.
Mr. Mayor.
Agreed.
Since he rescinded that, can we just get on with the vote, please?
Ask for a que- uh.
Call for the question. He rescinded, he rescinded his, his objection to it.
I call for a question.
There we go. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Angela. One of these days I'll get the terminology down.
We're going to go with Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
This is sitting in the banks on there.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Tatum?
Yes.
Ms. Rowland?
Yes.
And, and just for, and just for the clarity, yes, if, if the contract for, is needed, it will not be issued without the council vote and, and being in full open transparency, so I, I, I'm not. Cause I said, I want to, I don't want to go to jail alone.
He said you wanted to lose weight.
Yeah.
That'd be a way to do it.
Yeah. So down to, well, any, any con- hold on, hold on. Comments or questions from the crowd?
Oh. John Norberg.
Oh, I missed, uh, okay, sorry, new business number three, let's get through that real quick. Uh, adding a member to the animal control committee, which would be Mr. Jeff Tatum.
It's not adding, replacing.
Or replacing.
Okay, what it is, is the trustees had brought Steve on, or Stephen on board, um, over the construction and everything. So his is only like a temporary thing, but we seem to have gotten more done since he's been on there. So I was proposing to bring Jeff along on board in January because construction should be done to help with the animal control.
And that's the motion.
To, to, to replace.
For Jeff to replace Steve?
For Jeff to pretty much replace Steve in January.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Tatum, seconded by Ms., uh, Mr. Martin to add Jeff Tatum to the animal control committee to replace Steve Thompson in January. I need to do a roll call now. Voice vote, voice vote, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Now, Mr. John.
Just a little verification, at the annual control meeting or committee meeting, it was discussed that the white dog house is not going to be not used once the building is made. Pam had asked that at the working meeting, because everybody's hearing that. We were told that the white dog building would be gotten rid of once the new building. But then at the meeting you said no. So you at the meeting, Mr. Mayor, said that the new building has twenty-two cages. The big, the white building has sixteen, so that makes it thirty-eight dogs that can be put in there. But like you said in the meeting, there is no heat in there. Are you planning on putting a heat in that new, that white building?
To replacing it?
Well, have, if you're going to use it, you're going to have to replace it.
If it's, and if it's used in the cold temperatures, yes.
Okay, so.
If it, if it's been used in the cold temperatures, there'll be heat provided, yes.
Is it going to be propane out there or do we have to get a heater out there? Cause if that propane heater that's not there doesn't work, we're going to have to get something in there that works just in case.
Uh, nobody told me the heater didn't work.
Speaking of, they, uh, they've got two grants that they're looking into to try and remedy that, to get away from the propane.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah, cause I didn't know the heater didn't work.
It works, but it's propane.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's, there's one other, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
There's one other point that needs to be made in terms of new kennel building, old kennel building. And combined, you're looking at thirty-six or thirty-eight. You have to come back to the issue of capacity. And in January and February meetings, I brought to the animal control committee meeting, there is an online count. there is an online calculator available through UC Berkeley, which deals with capacity. And the issue of capacity is dependent upon demand hours that can be applied. And I would put to those volunteers in the committee, whether it's in the committee meeting, but I would reiterate what we discussed in February and subsequently in March meetings, is that if you have limited volunteer hours and there are only so many hours and so many things that can be taken care of by the animal control officer and, uh, Ben, Brendan?
Brendan.
Um, their assistant. So there is a capacity issue out there for both dogs and cats. And that is driven by volunteer hours. And so there has to be this ongoing effort to manage the cat and dog population down as much as possible. Jonesboro's director, Jonesboro, the city, the sci- you know, many times more si- larger than the city has an average cat population of six. Not sixteen, not twenty, but six. And if you, likewise, there are much lower numbers in other communities, much larger than Cherokee, than twenty-five or thirty or whatever, we've hit, you know, numbers. So if we manage the numbers down, the preference, especially in extreme temperatures, summer or winter, is to use the new building because of the, the efficient heating and, and cooling of that building. And if we have less population, it's going to be much more manageable. But I encourage everybody to go to that online capacity calculator, because if you don't have a high degree of, uh, volunteer hours to supplement the animal control officers, you cannot handle the capacity that has been seen throughout this year.
Mr. Thompson's not agreeing with that, but I feel like the problem in Cherokee Village is we get animals dumped in Cherokee Village from all over.
And I understand that, I understand.
And how to compare Cherokee Village with Jonesboro where they've got more money, better, you know, more people to volunteer. You know, yeah, um.
But, but you're, you're missing the point that I'm trying to make and I, and I don't want to belabor it, but the number one goal of animal control needs to be rapid placement of these animals in their permanent homes, not temporary housing for extended periods of time.
Can I finish?
Yes, ma'am.
They have adoptions every Saturday.
Understood.
Every Saturday, and sometimes in the evening. And, you know, they have people look and they may, and it's great if they get one. Awesome if they get two adopted, at least, you know, two out of thirty is very good. But, I mean, and I applaud Megan and her group for after-hours and on weekends doing these adoption things. And I mean, it's not that they're not trying, it's just not people out there willing to come adopt today.
And, and I don't disagree with any point that you've made, Misty. And I've repeatedly said this, but to look at the facility and say that we have twenty-two enclosures in the new building and sixteen or eighteen in the new, in the old building does not mean that we should si- sit there and be any less diligent than they have been on, on an ongoing basis to get those animals adopted out quickly. It shouldn't mean that we gear up to constantly have thirty-plus dogs on location. And, and I agree with you, they do a great job, but the, the objective really needs to be leaned into and not look at it as a constant, we're full or near full at capacity.
Let me interject this real quick, I think the animal control, the, the whole problem with the strays, what's going on in the city, that whole issue altogether will be something we're going to have to talk a lot about when we start doing our planning for the future of the city.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion.
Oh, wait, you have another person?
I have a few words, uh, first off, I'd like to, to say that AMP is established to benefit the community, not city council, not any individuals, certainly not SID. So what I want to say is, I believe a precedent has already been set as far as having an outlier being on one of our commissions. And that would have been, uh, the now inactive street department commission, who had Tom Thornton, who's a CV waterworks director, was on the street commission. Why? Expediency. They were ripping up the roads, fixing the pipes. Street department had to come in later and fix the streets. So that, that's been set, that's a precedent that someone from the outside is on one of our commissions. And I don't believe he even lives in Cherokee Village.
Yes, he does.
No.
Yes, he does. He lives in Cherokee Village.
Whatever, okay. Uh, number two, we're not going to get, we're not going to move forward as a community. If we have this antagonistic BS of, you know, SID versus the city, we have to work together. We got some problems, we got a budget deficit. SID's looking at, you know, expiration, you know, best defused by date as far as their budget is concerned. So we need to work as, as a group and a community to do what's best for the citizens of this community. We can no longer have this inner arguing with, between different groups. And I believe that's it. So I just wanted to mention that, you know, the precedent of, of having someone from the outside is already established there. And I do believe that there, there may be a conflict of interest as one of the people on the council might have some potential legal negotiations going on as far as lake management, usage of water. So that's it.
Yeah, it's personal.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I ask to respond to that because.
Outside of the meeting, we need to adjourn, we're going to be here all night long. I apologize.
I made the motion.
I apologize for our city council meeting going for an hour and forty minutes. I want to thank everybody for being here and thank the council for being here. Uh, Mr. Martin made the motion, it was seconded over here.
Second.
By Mr. Tatum or Mr. Smith?
One of us.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nathan, Nathan. Yes, that's a personal fact.